Well, it looks like at six o'clock we're going to call this meeting into order. Plaid of allegiance, everybody stand please. Plaid of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just eternal.
Thank you. Am I getting that correct? All right, roll call please.
Chairman Blumenfield.
You're here.
Mr. Boshert.
Here.
Dr. Keshan.
Here.
Mr. Robertson. Mr.?
Dishowski.
Dishowski.[37.97][37.97](laughing). Uh, Mr. Schnecker.
Here.
Mr. Harren is not here, and I will be here for Adam.
Statement of public notice.
The meeting was noticed in accordance with the open meeting laws on Tuesday, July 20th.
Okay, we will approve the minutes at the end of the... Our meeting minutes from June of 2020 will be approved at the end of the meeting. We do go into closed session on occasion, as it happened in about 25 years, so we probably won't do that, but we have to put it on the notice. We have no old business, new business. Appeal number 01-2021, petitioner Mitch Gola, on behalf of the Gola Trust, property West 180 South 8091 Pioneer Drive, requesting under the direction of section 400-18 of the municipal code zoning, zoning board of appeals, petitioner seeks the following variance. Chapter 400-167(c), point of parant 2, parant A, accessory structure size limits. Parant 2 area, subject to the open space requirements of the zoning district, the total square footage of all accessory structures subject to this section is permitted as follows. Parant A, square footage permitted by right, the greater of 720 square feet or 60% of the assessed floor area of the principal structure. A total accessory structure size limit of the above noted property is 720 square feet in area. The petitioner seeks to be allowed to keep two existing accessory structures totaling 997 square feet on the recently split 0.49... 459 acre property, and is therefore requesting a 277 square foot variance from the maximum total allowed accessory structure size limit. Who appears to speak on behalf of either the city or on behalf of the petitioner? Anybody who wishes to speak, please stand up. Raise your...
It'd be you two.
Yeah. Are any of you going to speak? No? Just easier representative? Okay. Okay.
I'm gonna do it.
Oh, there we go, Russ.
Okay. In all judicial proceedings, the witness shall be sworn in before testifying in all due minutes heard.
You just have to read yours.
I am. I'm just sworn in, man. Do you solemnly swear the testimony which you shall give in appeal 01-2021 shall be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Okay, please state your name and your address for the record, Mr. Gola.
My name is Mitch.
Mitch?
Do you want me to use the microphone?
You can use... If you use the microphone, it's easier for them to describe, transcribe the minutes.
My name is Mitch, or Mitchell. Um, I'm current...
Last name?
Gola, Mitchell Gola.
Okay.
Um, my current address, I'm living in Oak Creek, 642 East Village Green Court, but my wife and I are soon going to be building a home right here on Pioneer Drive.
That's all I need for right now. Mayor?
Rick Podfalski, Mayor of City of Mesquite.
Do you want to give us your address? We know where you live. Okay. Adam?
I'm Aaron Cole.
Hi, Aaron.
I'm associate planner at Citizens Two.
Okay. Who appears on behalf of Mr. Gola? Mr. Gola, would you like to stand in the microphone and tell us the background of your petition and why you're before us today?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, first of all, I'd like to start off with a couple of introductions. You guys know me, my name's Mitch. This is my wife, Kristen. She's a nurse, she's wonderful. Um, we're super excited to build a home here in Mesquite. My mom, Deborah, and my dad, Mark. Um, they're gonna be our new neighbors. We don't know if that's a good thing or not.
Good luck.
Yeah.
Okay. And why are you petitioning for a variance this evening?
So, we are petitioning for a variance because we want to keep the outbuildings on the lot. Our hardship... Is it all right if I get into that?
Please do. Give us all the information that you have so that we can make a decision based on your request.
Our hardship is that we are being wrongfully penalized because of the small square footage of the house. This house is only 767 square feet and was built in 1946 under a different set of housing standards. You might be aware that the current minimum standard for a house size is 1,100 square feet. This house is more than 300 square feet less than that. This, the small house size does not allow for the proper storage that we need. The outbuildings allow for the storage for basic home owning necessities. This includes a covered location to park two vehicles, it includes a location to store lawnmower, snow blower, other tools. I'm not gonna get into everything that's in the garage, but this necessary storage prevents these items from being kept out in the yard, from being damaged, from being stolen. And for these reasons, if we were to remove these important outbuildings, it would result in an unnecessary burdensome hardship. We are requesting an area variance to keep the existing outbuildings on the property. We are not asking for anything more or anything new. We would just like to keep the status quo of the outbuildings that have been there for many, many years. We are hopeful that we can be granted this variance, and we believe the decision to approve this variance is most practical and feasible. If... That's all I have for now, but if you have any questions, we want to keep this a very open discussion with us, so we are happy to answer them.
Questions?
Thank you.
Mr. Gola, um, the land was recently subdivided. At that time, did you know that the city had restrictions on lot sizes?
No. So, I had a feeling that was probably a question that you were thinking about. And when we were doing this lot division, we were informed late in the process that this was going to be a problem. And I don't want to throw anybody under the bus because Aaron and Adam have been hugely helpful, and we really, really appreciate their help, and we wouldn't be able to do this house without them. But there was just a misunderstanding there, and we weren't informed of this problem until the second engineering review. And that's, we felt was kind of a time where there was supposed to be small changes, not a big change that was gonna affect the size of the property. So, I mean, that's kind of why we're here today, I think, if...
So, before the land was subdivided, you were aware that there was a restriction, that the city had restrictions on zoning?
We were nearly 100% complete with the CSM.
But before you were complete, you had knowledge that there was an issue about the...
That's, at the last minute, we were informed, yes.
And did you work with someone who was knowledgeable about Mesquite laws, an attorney, a contractor, a real estate agent?
We worked with our surveyor, Adam, or Mike Casey, and we worked with Adam.
And before your subdivision, what went before the council for approval, were you aware that there was an issue?
We were presented with the option to either change the entire lot or come to the Board of Appeals. And we really thought we would be able to win our case here.
For the record, would you please tell the board and members what your hardship is?
Our hardship is that we're being wrongfully penalized for the small house, which means that we don't have enough storage in the house, and the garage and shed provide us with this storage.
I'm sorry you were given the opportunity, and I'm sorry, you can't.
That is our hardship.
So, you're saying that because the house is too small, you need a variance?
Correct.
Joe?
Yeah, just, I'm looking at the pictures here, just to make sure I understand the property. There's a building, there's the house, which is the 760 square feet, correct?
Yes.
And then there is a separate, uh, it's like a apartment or garage for the cars, correct?
Yes.
And then behind that, it looks like there's another shed that is attached to that?
Yes.
Okay, and then behind that, there's yet another shed or accessory?
That is correct.
shed, okay. And, uh, I'm assuming cars go in that garage, that first primary or the...
Yes.
Okay, and then what is stored in that second structure behind it?
That's where we keep the lawn mowers. The, we actually have a very good situation because the, that property, the tenants will cut their own grass, and they have their own lawn mower for that, and they do that also. They have their own lawn mower, they have their own snow blower back there, there's different yard tools, and they take care of all of that.
And then what is stored in that, that other structure?
There's other yard tools back there.
Okay.
And various tools for the house also.
And those items, there's no room in the other structure, but those in the garage or that other secondary structure are cached, there's no room in that area for those items?
In order to keep it organized, no. That's currently where we have them stored.
Any other questions, Mr. Gola?
So, one, uh, Russ Keshan, just for the record. So, once again, just, you know, college professors, you have to, pretty much, I don't know anything. What is it you want to do in a cogent fashion, just once more, one more time? What is it you're looking to do?
We would like to keep what we have.
Okay. You're not looking to build anything?
No.
So, the city allowed you to subdivide off a parcel, knowing that the subsequent result of that would be the requirement to do what?
Can you repeat the question?
Is that accurate, is it accurate to say that you...
So...
...parsed off that parcel, the original parcel?
Correct. That is why we are requesting a variance.
Yes, and, and that we allowed this parcel to be cut off, knowing that it was nonconforming on that date?
Correct.
How did, how did we, I mean, I think the question is, is, I'm not talking about you, I'm talking about us. How is it we allowed this to happen without, prior to this even happening, that we would require it torn down? Now that the cow's out of the barn, or the garage, we are basically saying, "It's tear it down."
Russ, I think that's...
Well, no, but my issue is, is that if we had felt that this was an urgent event, wouldn't it have been done before we allowed it to be cut apart, rather than subsequent to that event?
And as soon as...
That's my, but I'm asking him.
Aaron, yeah.
I'm not asking him.
But he doesn't know. Oh, question, Joe?
When, can you go through the sequence of events in terms of when the land was subdivided, and then the, you said there was a second engineering review, and then at that point, that's when you were made aware of the issue with the accessory structures, so about side petitions? Do I have that sequence correct?
If I may, my testimony might clear a lot of this up.
Anybody have any other questions for Mr. Gola?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
Would you please come forward? Assist?
Thank you. As I'm sure you're aware, it's rare for a mayor to show up and testify at these, and you probably will never...
In fact, I believe you're the person who...
And you will never see me, probably at another one, so... So, the Gola family wished to subdivide their lot, and like they said, late in the process, both to the city's awareness and theirs, and it was very late in the process, this accessory structure problem popped up. It really wouldn't make any sense for them to redo their CSM at that point if they have the option of going to you guys, because there's a chance, and I would hope, a hopeful chance, that you would grant the variance on this, because if they, if you don't grant the variance, they have other options and go back through the process that they would have had to do anyway, redraw the CSM to something that, I'll be honest, is not to the city's best interests. So, that's part of it. The thing they're asking for, and I can give you history, and the ordinance that is, they're in, they'll be in violation from, or are in violation from, on the accessory structure, I was part of drafting that as an alderman 20 years ago, and the idea wasn't to be more limiting to people, it was to allow them to have more accessory structures. We didn't take into consideration the small footprint of existing homes at the time. So, his argument that he's being penalized for having a small home is actually true, and had we thought of something like that when we drafted the ordinance, it would have been taken care of, and probably will be, maybe in the future, when we get around to something like that. It's not real high on the list of things to do right now, but kind of looking back, I wish we would have. If you look at the overall structures on the property, combine the house, you know, and the accessory structures, it's the same square footage that if the house would have actually been built to minimum standards and, and what they were allowed to have by right. So, I think it's in the best interest of the city and the Golas not to tear down existing structures that are fine. It's not causing problems with any setbacks, neighbors, anything else, it's not putting too much on the property. One of the reasons we have these accessory structure rules is not to have overcluttered properties, to have perviable surfaces for rainwater, all of which is not being affected here. So, because of that, I would hope you would grant it, but the history part of it is, why didn't they make these changes? Once they were made aware of it, they could have, but I think they're better off to come through you first, to try to resolve with what they have, and if you don't do it, they have other options, and I, I don't think the, the way it looks at the end, exercising their options by redrawing the certified survey map and re-dividing the property is gonna do anyone any, you know, it's a disservice to the community, quite honestly, that way. So, any questions for me?
You're aware of the hardship requirement for variance approved?
I'm aware of what your authority is to do on this board. I sat on it.
I know that, and so that's why I want to make sure that you understand that we have some restrictions, and the Golas know that we have some restrictions as well.
Well, it's, it's based, based on what your interpretation of a hardship is, so...
No, it's actually written on what we can, and I can read it all too.
You can argue with me all day long on it.
I don't... Okay, Mr. Mayor, yes, can you elaborate on what the hardship is?
Um, yes, there are allowable structures for the property. If you look at the spirit of the ordinance when written was to have so much accessories, or not accessories, total structures on the property. Their total structures on the property, if you add up all the square footages, is the same as if that house had been required to be built to 1,100 square feet. So, their, their overall structures are where they should be. So, they're being penalized because we didn't, the city didn't take into consideration. The other, the other hardship that they would have is, the city did allow the CSM to go through without requiring them to tear down the accessory structure beforehand. So, now that it's been approved, we're going back and saying, "Tear it down."
I don't know if this is a question, well, I'm gonna ask a question about it on offense, for it or not.
It might be true.
Does a land division trigger enforcement of all revised building codes?
It's a question for Aaron.
Thank you. Any questions, any other questions for the mayor? Thank you very much. Okay. Now, we'll let Aaron present the city's side and why they've made the recommendation that they've made.
Okay, what we have, as everyone said, there is a two-lot certified survey map that was approved and recorded, and as everyone has said, there's accessory structures that go over the limit of what they're allowed based on the smaller lot size. When it was one bigger lot, all these accessory structures were okay, but since there's, these accessory structures are being split off with the house, the lot is smaller, still meets the zoning code, but it's smaller, and so they're only allowed 720 square feet of accessory structures in total. Two accessory structures have been there for over 70 years, I mean, they're all old, the house has, has been there similar timeframe. But the fact that there was, oh, and also when, with the certified survey map, it may have been noted late that there were outbuildings that needed, that were, exceeded the limit, but there's a note on the certified survey map that talks about removing or reducing the footprint of the accessory structures to the 720 square foot limit within six months of the recording. So, as the mayor said, though, it may, it was later in the game, and they would have had to redraw the lot lines for the land division. But to say that no one was aware, I mean, that, everything, it's on the recorded documents, so you would think that everyone read that before it was recorded. As Mitch said, the hardships, the home, the home was built in '46, and it is a smaller house size. Right now, the minimum house size is 1,100 square feet, which would, if it was 1,100, or 1,200 square feet, the house was, then they'd be allowed to seven, you can't get a bonus unless it's larger than 1,200 square feet or more than 40,000 square feet on the property. Neither one of those conditions exist on this new lot. The small existing house not allowing for storage is more of a self-imposed hardship. As we all know, I mean, you have, if you have a small house, normally you have a smaller amount of stuff, the larger house you have, you tend to get more stuff and fill it up. So, with staff, we didn't, we didn't feel that there is a valid hardship based on the zoning code, so we recommended denial of the, of the appeal because of those reasons.
Any questions for Aaron based on the city's presentation?
So, my earlier question around the land division, does that trigger enforcement of all existing building codes, or all current building codes?
I wouldn't say building codes, I'd say zoning, zoning codes, that is when we typically would go and look at things like this, but it was brought up, again, late in the, in the process. But yeah, it's, it's a time when the city can enforce that, that type of thing.
Okay. So, there is no such thing as like a grandfathering clause of, hey, this was the intent of the land and the structures prior to that code being in place, that doesn't get grandfathered or carried forward? Am I understanding that correct?
Well, I would, I would say no, because there's, the laws, the, the ordinance as they are now, made the land split, and so you would, even though, like I said, when the, when the property was, before it was divided, the accessory structures were fine, because you can get a bonus if you have 40,000 square foot lot or larger. The lot at the time was over seven acres, so there's a formula in the code, you're allowed larger, a larger amount of accessory structure square footage. So, when, even though the building codes back then allowed for a smaller house than they do now, the lot size is where the, the bonus would have come from, to meet the ordinance, and the minimum lot size, which is what, what they went to, 20,000 square feet, doesn't allow for that bonus.
Okay. In your opinion, are there additional remedies? If, if the denial goes forward, are, what are the other options, or, you know, the mayor talked about some additional, you know, options that are available? Can you elaborate on what those other additional options are?
If this is denied, then I guess the first option would be to remove the structures or decrease the square footage of them, the homeowners would. The other option would be to redraw the property lines, as the mayor discussed, and how they do that, you know, would be up to them, which, again, like the mayor said, may or may not be advantageous to what the city's looking to do. Those are essentially the two options.
Any other, Russ?
So, if I were to subdivide a lot in which it's in, it's been grandfathered into where the house is placed on the lot, and I were to subdivide it, we would then retroactively make them move the house?
If it was, I don't know, at that point, it would be, you can't make it more nonconforming. So, if it was too close to the road, let's say, it didn't meet that, that requirement, say the requirement is 40 feet, which it is in most of the city, and the house sat at 30 feet from the road, and you're splitting along the side, similar to something like this, you wouldn't have to move the house, but you couldn't make it more nonconforming.
How are we making this more nonconforming? We're not moving anything, nothing to be...
You're right. And you're right, they're, they're not asking to make anything bigger or expand any of the buildings, they're just merely asking to keep status quo.
So, we're making a statement to the community that nonconforming lots cannot make any modifications in their lots?
Well, no, this wasn't nonconforming before.
Right? But it goes, the door swings both ways.
I think that's a pretty broad statement to make.
Well, I think this is a failure of administrative process. I think that it is, it is incredibly easy to look at a plat map early in the process and add up the numbers and divide early on to serve the citizens as to what the process should be. And so, when we say it came down to the end of the process, it should never have gotten to the end of the process. Wouldn't you agree with that?
I would say it was oversight, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Aaron from the city's side? Okay, then the open meeting portion of this appeal number 01-2021 is concluded. The board will now discuss the merits of what we've heard, make a decision, and you are more than welcome to stay, or you, if you have other things to do, you can go about your business and get in touch with Aaron or Adam tomorrow, but I think you will probably like to stay, so. Okay, so, I need a motion to, for this appeal, number 01-2021?
I'd like to move that we give Mr. Gola a little more time, he was kind of interrupted, if he, if he wants it.
Mitch? Mr. Mitch Gola?
Yes. I, I don't really have anything more to say.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure you said what you...
I am, I am concerned if the motion was to be denied, we would have other, other options, but we're not gonna go there right now.
Okay, thank you. All right, I need a motion from one member of the board, Russ? Speak, please.
I need the motion to approve the, the petition.
Appeal number 01-2021?
Appeal number 01-2021. That's been a senior subject to me.
All in favor of the motion to dis...
Me, the second.
Not the second.
I'll second.
Okay.
But, well, is there a discussion on this?
Yes, we're going to discuss it.
Okay.
Okay? Okay, we'll discuss the motion that was made to approve it. Doesn't mean we're approving or denying anything. We're just discussing. Okay, so Joe has seconded it. Discussion, who would like to open up the discussion? Joe, go ahead.
So I guess, Russ, make sure I understand your position. You're you're suggesting that because there's an administrative failure here, it that bypasses the basically the three-step test?
I I think that we have an obligation to be. Standards are only applicable if you establish the standards throughout the process. As as the city said, there there was there was a failure, not an enormous failure, but there's a failure early in the process. And we now have to recognize that failure, and we need to we need to make amends for it. And I think that is the hardship. The hardship is not self-imposed by the landlord, but it wasn't mitigated by the community. And I think we need to recognize that. And and I think in the future, we have an obligation to be crystal clear early in the process so that we guide our our community to the right direction before they put money on the table heading down a path that was obviously not a path you'd go down. And I and I just, you know, this is my, I feel needs to be corrected. And this is this isn't, you know, as as the mayor said, we don't have a lot, I mean, I could tell you, this this will build, add onto the house, make the house bigger. Then you could have an outbuilding as a as a function of the square footage of the house. These are not reasonable solutions at the ninth inning or the eighth inning. And so I I think we need to recognize this and realize this is not something that's going to come up on a regular basis where you have 800 square foot houses in our community that want to have a decent-sized garage and somewhere to put their lawn mower.
Henry?
Well, in the past, we've used topography as a hardship. We've used storage in some cases as a hardship. I guess my, one of my questions is, does this property have a basement?
Does this house property have a basement?
It does have a basement.
Thank you. We're a little out of order, but, you know.
A usable basement?
Okay.
Okay, so but where I'm going with this is that, you know, in the past, we've used those things as a hardship. So we can refer back to that. As far as garage sizes, I think your typical garage size now pretty much has to be a two-car garage at least. You know, so that's, you know, that I think justifies the size of the garage and so forth.
I have a question. Could you put like a limit on approvals, like say, if we approve it? And if they sell the house in the future, that we recommend that has to be removed?
No. We are limited to what we can and can't do. No, that was a simplification.
Russ, I understand the position of like, hey, there's an administrative failure here, right? But I guess the piece I'm struggling on is that unnecessary hardship.
Yeah, unnecessary. Hold the palm. It's unnecessary. It wasn't necessary that that would, our meeting here tonight was unnecessary. And and I and I and I'm not critic, trust me, I'm not criticizing the department. You guys are good, you can. But I think that we need to reflect upon how the process works and guide the people instead of sending them down a path that down the road at, you know, because, by the way, could they have subdivided this without us telling them? Yeah, they could. And then we could have walked, knocked on the door the next day and said, oh, by the way, that has to come down.
Different issue.
No, it's the same issue. It is it is giving guidance and counsel to our community as soon as we can. And as soon as we can is when we basically add up the numbers of the square feet. And it isn't, it isn't, you know, it's a it's a learning process.
But, yeah, but why why am I being asked to, you know, the mayor spoke about how, hey, we created this rule, right? And this violates the rule, I wish we could have adjusted that. Why am I being asked to play the role of the legislature right now?
Because we're tough.
There you go with the thick skins, you know. Okay.
But I encourage the mayor to fix the rule.
Well, that's a whole, whole different thing, whole different subject. Joe, are you, have any other questions?
No.
Okay, so I understand that this is a unique situation. We have unique situations all over Mesquite. And try as we might, with most of them, we try and fix them as best we can when we when they get to us. We understand the house is small. But I also understand that what exists there, according to the statement that was provided for the hardship, that these these two garages and the two outbuildings have they store two cars, that's the garage. But then a lawnmower, snowblower, various necessary yard tools and other necessary household objects. There are two buildings there. And it seems like there's a lot less being stored there than that they could store them in a different way in one of the buildings if they don't get a variance. Now, they they knew they, everybody knew before this went to approval that this was unique and that there were going to be some issues with the amount of of land, amount of of floor area that they could have with these two free outbuildings. And yet it went forward. It's not our role to decide whether that should have been done back 20 years ago, if the house size should have been looked at, if it should have been stopped in the process, called and said, wait, we need to look at this differently. Mr. Gola testified that they knew that there was an issue and they could have changed it, but they didn't. The city knew that it was an issue, and they didn't say you should change it. They said, you have an option to appeal it and go to the zoning board of appeals, which is where you are. But we, under state law, are required to look for a hardship that is not self-imposed. Doesn't mean that the city says, you know, oh, you've got a small house. We'll take that into consideration. It says you have to find a hardship under state law that says that it complies with the state law and so that the variance can be granted. And yes, there are other issues that will come up with other properties in the city of Mesquite, long past our lifetimes. But we have to look at what we can do legally on behalf of our board and the city and the homeowners. And we do our best job to make sure that what we have to work with is as lenient and acceptable to the property owners, the city and the board as possible. And so we need to find a hardship that would allow us to do that. And based on what I've heard this evening from all of the testimony, I don't believe that there is a hardship that I can justify voting in favor of. And I I'm sorry to say that, but I believe that there were options. They weren't taken. And now we're being asked to be the judge and jury for something that could have been changed before it became an issue. So that's that's how I see it. Any other discussion? Okay, then I will call for the roll on the motion to approve.
Chairman Blomfield.
No.
Mr. Boucher.
Yes.
Dr. Keshan.
Yes.
Mr. Derschelski, no. Mr. Schnecker.
I don't have a board.
Oh, you're right.
You actually do because you're here and we don't have a full board. So you do have.
I don't want muddy waters too much because I'm not, my position right now is an odor ice, so.
Say that again.
My term was supposed to be revoked. And we we came to that agreement, and I agreed to be an alternate. But the paperwork has arrived.
Yeah, but I don't, I think it's initial.
I think.
The initial carries.
Yeah.
It does, yeah. Okay.
That's a new one I haven't heard yet.
I'm going to say yes.
I believe that makes our vote three in favor to oppose, the variance is approved.
Correct.
Congratulations. Okay, we will go back and you can talk to Aaron and Adam tomorrow and see if there's anything that you need to do. I don't think there is. But congratulations, good luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, we will go back to our business at hand. Okay, all businesses, the meeting minutes from July 22 of 2021? Wait, I have to make sure that this is the right one that we're approving.
It's been a while.
Was it June 25, 2020?
Um, those are the mid.
Oh, man.
Aaron, where are we?
She'll be from.
Approval of the June 25, 2025 meeting. And that would have been the appeal of the Hazles. Okay.
That was the Mesquite laundry.
The Mesquite laundry, yes. No, I don't think you were.
I was not.
Excuses, Mr. Schnecker, Mr. Boucher, Mr. Wunder.
Oh, so we don't have, we don't have a form of. You were, you were here, you were here, Russ.
I was here.
You were here.
I'm going to make a motion.
Okay, you were here, I was here, Russ was, I mean, Henry was not. We still don't have enough.
You don't, you're not required.
We don't need a form. Okay, all right, let's do it. Approval, okay, second.
Aaron, can you go second?
Dennis, you second?
I second.
Here, okay.
I was in here.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, anything else? Okay, I need a motion to adjourn.
I motion adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Joe seconded, thank you very much. See you again in six months.